I'd like to call this meeting of the Wunsaket City Council to order for Thursday, May 29, 2025. Roll call, Adam Schuh.
Councilman Canoyam?
Here.
Councilman Juwah?
Here.
Councilwoman Spox? Councilwoman Gonzalez? Councilwoman Harmon?
Here.
Councilwoman Sierra?
Here.
President Gendron?
Here. We do have a forum. The first thing, the first item on the agenda is a public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2025-2026 budget. I would ask, first of all, I want to let everyone know this is a public hearing. This is the city council's opportunity to hear from the public regarding the budget. It is not a discussion or a debate back and forth. It's simply for you to point out things that we will then further look at and discuss when we get to deliberation. There's nothing on the agenda for tonight for deliberation. It is simply for us to have the opportunity to hear from the public. With that being said, I would ask that anyone who is going to address the council, please keep your comments in good taste. There is nothing to get personal about at these hearings. If you could keep all of your comments targeted towards the budget and know that the administration and the city council will be listening to your concerns. Being said, is there anyone that would like to begin the discussion on the public comment? Please state your name and address for the clerk. Adjust the microphone so that we can hear you. And because it looks like we're going to have a big crowd, we'll ask everyone's courtesy in keeping your comments to around five minutes if, uh, if we have everyone talking at once, uh, talking tonight. Is there anyone that would like to address the city council? There are none, we'll look for more as long as we find a chance. This walking time counts to your five minutes.
Good evening. I'm Rob Stewart, president of Wunsaket Teachers Guild. We're at 68 Conville Street in Wunsaket. A school librarian, now retired, once told me how grateful she was to the city for the funds that contributed to her salary for all the years she worked. Her gratitude was authentic, and those few years I think about her and how she loved her job and remember who paid her salary. I'm here tonight to ask the council to raise the local contribution it provides Wunsaket Education Department. RIEPEC, or the Rhode Island Public Expenditure Council publishes local aid contribution for Rhode Island cities and towns. And the data says that Wunsaket contributed $16.1 million 10 years ago and contributed $16.7 million this year. RIEPEC numbers show that the city's local contribution has increased by about 0.34% per year for 10 years. That's pretty average, if you were to average it out. Additionally, the city did not put up a bond for the George Masoodi Elementary Complex. Those days paying, I'm here, I'm not positive about that. I believe it's in excess of 90% of the project costs. The city did not come up with the $5 million for these schools. The $5 million painfully came from the existing school budget. If the needs of our students were being met, it wouldn't matter that the city has not increased its local contribution barely. However, the operational and capital deficits in our schools, they're visible. And the school committee, the public, and of course, our students are aware that their basic needs are not being met. Last night, the school committee discussed laying off over 30 teachers for budgetary reasons. They discussed the negative outcomes if they cut, for example, paraprofessionals from our youngest learners in like the K classes, kindergarten classes, some of which have quality needs. They run through the school, they call it eloping, they have complex social emotional needs. The staff do what they can under difficult circumstances, but make no mistake, these cuts will rip it out to our most vulnerable students. We understand that the state has historically underfunded our public schools. The funding form has been tweaked to help, but disparities are present because it's not nearly enough. And the General Assembly knows that. We implore you to increase the local contribution and send a clear message to your residents and the children of the city that you're doing what you can to help. No one is arguing that the city should fund a disproportionate share. The formulated A recommendation from the state this year, I believe, is $88 million. What we're asking the council tonight is to provide proportionate, proportionate inflationary related increase on that $16.7 million local contribution. The increase, while proportionately small, is hugely important. The prosperity and well-being of this community is linked to the health of our schools. There's no saying I don't have a responsibility. The prosperity, prosperity and well-being of this community is linked to the health of our schools. When you care for the schools, you're communicating a message of hope, signaling that Wunsaket is a good place to raise children, buy homes, establish businesses, and to you otherwise sends the wrong message. We are grateful for the state's support, but please provide an inflation-related increase to the local contribution. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the city council, admin and community members. I'm just here to kind of follow up on what Mr. Stewart was stating as well.
Can you state your name and address for the city?
Yes, Kimberly Cooney, 255 Avenue A, Wunsaket.
Thank you.
I am currently a kindergarten teacher for our district. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of our youngest learners and to urge you to consider every possible opportunity to ensure that the proposed cuts to teacher assistant positions in our kindergarten classrooms do not happen. We are here today asking for your help. Just 64 days ago, I gave a speech at the school committee meeting on safety and safety concerns in our classrooms. At this meeting, I spoke about a very specific situation about me being pregnant and the daily unsafe scenarios I encountered with behavior students. I detailed write-ups, suspensions, 911 calls, eloping, classroom lockdowns, climbing, verbal threats, and even physical. I have that same exact detailed speech here printed with me that I'd like to submit as well. But long story short, I remember everyone's jaw dropping. I remember the many messages I received after, and that was a collective sense of concern and appall. Now imagine that same situation with two hands less. Imagine that same situation where my students sat in cafeteria after classroom evacuation without a teacher assistant to keep them calm, to remind them that they were safe. Kindergarten is a foundational year. Our students are just five and six years old. Many are away from home for the first time, learning how to be a part of the group, how to follow routine, and how to express their needs. This is a time of tremendous growth, but also a great vulnerability. They need support, guidance, and individualized attention to thrive. I chose today to tally how many times my students asked me personally for help. That final number came to 125. 125 times a student raised a hand and asked me for help. There are 360 minutes in a school day, minus your 20-minute lunch, your 20-minute recess, and a 40-minute itinerary break. That leaves 280 academic minutes. Within that 280 academic minutes, 125 times I was needed. That means every two minutes and 15 seconds, I was called on. Three kids ran out of the calf, eight shoes tied, 84 papers passed out. I completed two individual student behavior charts along with a 19-page math assessment completed one-on-one. Again, they're five. Our classrooms are also inclusive. We welcome students with disabilities, students who are English language learners, and students with a wide range of academic and social emotional needs. Inclusion is not just a work. It is a commitment to ensuring every child has access to the support they need to succeed alongside their peers. Our teacher assistants are vital to making that possible. When one adult is helping a child with a disability or a student who needs extra support, I can then continue instructing the rest of the class. Without assistance, students would need one-on-one to help, uh, students who need one-on-one to help, um, would may not get that. The entire class is then disrupted. Ensuring safety. Five and six-year-olds are still developing self-regulation and awareness of their surroundings. Having an extra adult in the room helps prevent accidents and ensures that all students are supervised, especially during transitions or event emergencies. Supporting inclusion. True inclusion means adapting lessons, materials, and activities so that every child can participate. This often requires me to hold small group or individualized instruction, something that is not possible without my TA. Foster social, animal social growth. Young children need help resolving conflicts, expressing their feelings, and learning how to be a part of the community. Assistance helps model and reinforce these skills throughout the day. Along with that, maximizing instructional time. With an assistant, I'm able to spend more time teaching and less time managing logistics, allowing for a richer and more meaningful learning experience. Cutting these assistant positions will lead to greater challenges, increased behavior issues, lower academic achievement, and potentially higher costs for specialized services that go on that road. Most importantly, it will mean that our youngest and most vulnerable students are not getting the support they need at the most crucial time in their development. I urge you to invest in our children's future by maintaining these assistant positions in our kindergarten classroom. Let's give every child a strong start that he deserves.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the city council?
Hi, I'm Shawn Aaron Gola, I reside at 55 Huntington Avenue in Wunsaket. I am here as a resident, a taxpayer, a mom, and as an educator in Wunsaket Education Department. I did not prepare anything. I just want to appeal for some kind of support financially. We are struggling as it is to meet all the academic requirements that are needed. I currently, I was formerly a third grade teacher in the elementary level. I am now a middle school counselor, and the things that we deal with on a daily basis are just mind-blowing, to say the least. It is a very, very difficult job, and it's not one that's getting easier anytime soon. It certainly doesn't get easier as, as you know, you go through the grade levels. I'm cutting that out firsthand. This is my sixth year in the middle school, and it's very eye-opening and a very different experience from what I had prior. But I don't know much about numbers and budgets and all that kind of stuff. I wouldn't even pretend to, and it probably suits me better if I did for my own personal reasons. But one thing I do know about is I know about kids. I know about education, and I know about what these kids are needing. And it's a lot more than just curriculum and all the other things that we are required to do by RIDE. We do a lot more every single day. We play a lot more roles than just teacher or counselor. And we work hard all the time, but we can only do so much with little to no resources. So I'm just here again as a taxpayer, a mom, a counselor, and a teacher, saying, please help us if we can. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Cecily Lavelle, Level 122, 7th Avenue, Wunsaket. I'm sorry, you said Flavoli? Flavoli. I'm here addressing the layoffs of teachers due to budget cuts, and I'm here to say that as a student at the Wunsaket High School, I know that our community is already extremely underserved, and these negative changes are affecting our students. We all, like, don't have the same opportunities or privileges as other students, and this change has just added a barrier to our learning time. This change will increase bullying, fights, drama, and racism. And all of this will more than likely go unnoticed because these teachers will have more students to tend to than what they normally have. There will be less students, never not, not less students. There will be less learning time for students and big distractions. It will be future distractions for the students and the teachers. This is an academic setback, and students will fall behind. These teachers have always went above and beyond for us, giving them their all. They work so hard, and making this change would not just be failing our hard work as teachers, but it will be failing the students by not letting them get a fair chance at a good education from great teachers. Our students deserve the best, as do we all. Our community deserves a fair shot at success. Our education matters, our safety matters, and our teachers very much matter. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Barbara Rosania, 37th Old Springfield Place, Wunsaket. I moved here 40 years ago with my intention to raise my children here in this very cold, rural city back in 1980. Raised my children here, started working for the Education Department 30 years ago. It was a great place for my children, great place for me. We've seen the good, the bad, the ups and downs. It's, it's so rough right now. I see fellow workers, teachers, parents, custodians, administrators running because of the difficulty that we're having in the city. We can't take more cuts. I see paraprofessionals, being a paraprofessional, that cover one-on-ones, children who really need help. But they're taken out of these classrooms. Those are the ones that are being cut. These, these classroom parents will not be covering these other, these one-on-one students when needed. So if they, if they're gone, who's, who's going to be responsible for the wheelchair students or the elopents? Or the children who need their help open? It's, it's just, we do a lot more. I'm just asking, please help fund Wunsaket. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Ian Trnaski. I am an educator here in Wunsaket. Not just an educator, but also very active in the community, and I volunteer for quite a few things, as I'm sure many here can attest to. We can't keep using the same excuse that the state is not funding us fairly over and over again. Because when you talk to people from RIDE or the state, they say the same thing about the city, that the city has not increased their local contribution. So, you know, why should we? And, you know, it's, it's kind of hard to argue with them when we, you look at the funding. It's more or less been level funded for the past 10 years, besides a small little bump, I think, last year and a little bit before then, but it's only a few percent. You know, we just, this is, this is your city, right? This is, these are your schools. These are your educators who are trying to educate, you know, your nieces, your nephews, your children, your grandchildren. You know, if I, if I was in a position of power, I would be wanting the best for my, my family, my nieces, my nephews, my grandchildren. And I'd want to be ensuring that they would be getting the education they deserve. And it just unfortunately looks like that's just not a priority of the city at the moment. I understand things are financially tough, but I think our kids and our future really deserve the best possible shot they have at a fair and equitable education to give them the greatest chance of success. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Kiana Brejron, and I live on 174 Review Street, Wunsaket. My name is Kiana Brejron. I'm here tonight as a concerned parent of three children in this district. In Marchup, I witnessed a packed school council meeting with teachers. She had heartbreaking stories about the challenges our students and teachers face on a daily and the extended support they need. With the budget cuts leading to layoffs, I'm afraid these issues will escalate. It's disheartening to see my city council meetings focused on other issues while our education system struggles. I see our city focus a lot on addiction and encampment, a lot, but never education. I'm not saying those things aren't important, but when we, when do we turn a little focus on our education system? We have paraprofessionals that will leave. Most of our children that need paraprofessionals have IMPs to have them. That's legal obligation. That's, that's detrimental. That's dangerous for our education system. I urge the community to come together to ensure our teachers have stable jobs and our children receive the best education possible in a safe environment. It's time to prioritize our youth and provide them with the support they deserve. We need funding, we need help, we need support, and not later, it's already later, we need it now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Patrick McGee, superintendent of schools in the Wunsaket Education Department.
Brad Perrier, Director of Finance, Wunsaket Education Department.
Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening, council president, members of the council, mayor. I come to you tonight not as an adversary, but as a partner. I truly believe that we all have the best interests of the children of Wunsaket at hand. I respectfully come to you this evening to request an increase in funds for the 25-26 school year. Historically, local funding has increased from 2016 to 2025 by 3.4%. State share has increased by 60% from 2016 to 2025. If we didn't have the increases from the state, I don't know where we would be here this evening. I say that not to cast aspersions, but this administration and this council has an opportunity this year to right the wrongs of previous administrations and previous councils. I see this as an opportunity. We can, you can make up, not in one year, but you can certainly start the process by which the Wunsaket Education Department has the resources to provide a top-notch education for our students. I am very proud to be here tonight. We have wonderful teachers from our school department here. We have wonderful administrators. We have district administrators. We have school committee. We have parents. We have students who have spoken very eloquently this evening, and I am so proud that our district has come together. If we want to improve the image of Wunsaket, if we want to improve test scores, if we want to attract businesses, families, we must invest in our children and the schools. While I understand 4% is probably not possible based on the situation, the financial situation in the city, but I implore you to provide the district with an increase so that at some point in the near future, our maintenance of effort, your maintenance of effort, can get us to a place where our heads are above water. We need to provide our students and their families with the education they deserve, and that's the only way. We can't continue to rely on the funding of the state. It's too unpredictable. Last year, we had to cut 42 positions. This year, we're looking to cut north of 25 positions. Positions which include classroom teachers, interventionists, for our needy students, early childhood staff, an eighth grade team, which will increase the class size in some of our classrooms here. And Wunsaket unfortunately leads the state in class sizes. If you would indulge me, I'm just going to read to you the positions that we have to cut for next year. A math interventionist from Vernon Savoy. An art teacher, Savoy and Citizens. A librarian, Harris and Globe. A music teacher, Harrison Coleman. A grade one teacher at Savoy. A grade two teacher at Savoy. A grade two teacher at Harris. A grade five teacher at Harris. An eighth grade English teacher at Hamlet Middle School. An eighth grade math teacher at Hamlet Middle School. An eighth grade resource teacher at Hamlet Middle School. An eighth grade social studies teacher at Hamlet Middle School. A social studies teacher at Wunsaket High School. An intervention specialist at Hamlet Middle School. 16 early childhood paraprofessionals. A resource paraprofessional at Coleman Elementary. A personal care assistant at Vernon Heights. Five interpreters. A instructional coach. A blended learning coach. Four innovation specialists. An assessment specialist. And an out-of-district LEA. Incidentally, and I know you're aware of this, but I would be remiss if I didn't mention this. The Wunsaket Education Department is funding 6% of the new George Masoodi Elementary School. The city does not have to come up with anything. That's because we, and I should say, Mr. Perrier, through his fiscal prudence and our budgeting for the last 10 years, had the funds to support the city not having to go to Oban. That's unheard of. So please, I ask, I beg of you, do what's best for the children of Wunsaket. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. Finally, on this side of the microphone, John Ward, 166 Catalina. I guess it's refreshing to be here. All panels got a hard, I guess, I want to say, work to go through here. But I want to start by echoing some of the comments about education. Some of you up there know me for many years now. I know that I have always advocated for what I consider to be what should be a standard practice in that we slowly increase our local share of education funding, at least to match the growth in the local operating budget for local services, simply because their expenses rise pretty much at the same rate cities' expenses rise. And why should they be treated differently than the city in regards to our utilization of our resource? I'll also say, having watched the General Assembly these last couple of weeks, because I'm strange and I do that kind of thing. I don't know if any of you do, but I happen to catch a lot of Senate finance hearings. And when we talk about education aid, I had to watch as RIDE went to give a presentation to the Senate Finance Committee explaining to them that they had bad numbers in calculating the poverty factor because they were using something that was lacking in enough information. So they were under identifying poverty of its students. And of course, the logical place that would happen is the urban centers, and Wunsaket's one of those. And so they revised numbers to March or something in the order of 20 million more in education funding, according to the formula. But that's not in the governor's budget. And so the question is, will the General Assembly pony up that $20 million and provide more state aid to the city? Just because the March numbers say it's a certain number doesn't mean that the state General Assembly is going to pass a budget that's going to carry that increase. And we know how many other pressures are coming on them from the federal government's threats of cuts, combined with their general shortfall and their loss of our funds. So anything you choose to do about education funding, which I believe should still be done despite the fact that we're on the cusp of the 4%, I think it's appropriate that something be done to start a practice of recognizing that we as a local community should be treating the Education Department the same way you treat the administration in terms of how much we're willing to spend on them with our local funds and have it grow at about the same pace operationally. In that light, keep in mind Providence just had to raise their levy by 8% or 7%, 7.5% because they were sued by the state and lost or settled and had to pony up millions more. And in doing so, used the settlement as a means to go to the General Assembly to ask for permission to increase their levy. as the means to go to the General Assembly to ask for permission to increase their levy. And it's still working its way through the General Assembly. But I don't think, I'd like to see Wunsaket faced with what I see coming down the road, which is the General Assembly saying, "We're not only going to designate what state is, we're going to designate what local contribution is." They do that in Massachusetts. And if they hit us, it may take our 16 million up to 20-plus million really quickly because they've always stood in a position that we underfund, not just level fund. I'd rather not be there and at least make some gesture to let them know that we're intending to do what's right by our students and the staff. And one more note. One of the other things I was watching in the General Assembly hearing was the fact that, I'm afraid to turn around and ask, but they're working on a bill that would require one social worker for every 250 students. You have enough social workers to cover that ratio? No, I don't think so. So we're laying off art teachers, but we're going to have to hire social workers if they pass that bill. Kind of weird. So before I go further, if you were to consider levy increases beyond what's there at 4% now, I've heard many people say sadly that we would have to go to the General Assembly to exceed the levy cap. No, we do not. Wunsaket just raised their levy, I believe, 634% because their new bonded debt obligations exceeded their ability to cover it to the cap. And so they got permission. Once it was acknowledged by the State Department of Revenue, they got permission to exceed the cap under existing statute. And I contend, and I posed the question to the solicitor and the administration and all of you, never having received a response to any from anybody on it, but the statute also says that a city or town forecasts or experiences a loss in total non-proprietary tax revenues, and the loss is certified by the Department of Revenue. And the non-tax revenue we lost was ARCA funds. We used $1.4 million and we lost it this year. So I posed the question to the person in the state that would answer the question and certify to it, just to see if I could get somebody to give me an answer. And I got one. And he said, "Based on your representations, it would seem to fit the criteria." So all it would take would be an explanation of what's happening, and a letter, and a response, and a process. So if there's a need. And I'm not advocating for exceeding cap as a matter of principle. I'm simply pointing out that we had occasion to raise the levy by 1% in the past. Of course, everybody was having a stroke. But the fact is, there are good reasons in this budget where things should be necessary and should be acknowledged, and I don't think they are at this point, that would raise beyond the cap. And I'm saying, if you're going to do something like that, two things. This is the time to do it, to fix what was done in the past with all the litigation underclass valuations and all that crap we had to contend with. And the impact, I don't think will be severe. And I haven't had a chance to review all of the revaluations because they're not public in record yet. But in conversations with the former tax assessor, he made it clear that for those self-storage locations had a tendency in the market to increase significantly in market value, which means their assessed values went up. And therefore, they are absorbing much more of a tax burden legally and property valued than the regular homeowners are. So the impact on the regular homeowners is probably going to be modest because of things like that increasing someone else's share as opposed to ours. But the point is that it's not required that we go to the General Assembly. There is no panic rush to get something passed through the General Assembly, which is very difficult at this point. And so I just wanted to make that clear. Now on to the budget. I have raised objection last year, and I'll reiterate it again this year. When we were dealing with a classification of things, and there is an ordinance associated with the budget called "Establishing salaries for non-union, non-classified employees of the city Wunsaket." Well, as I read our city charter, it says there will be a classification system for all city employees. It doesn't say for some of the city employees, or if we don't want city employees in the classification system, we'll leave them out. It doesn't say that in our charter. It says all city employees. And I contended last year, and I believe the year before with the solicitor, that this classification group and this ordinance, therefore, is a violation of the charter. These people need to be put in a classification system in the personnel ordinance. And whether or not they're in union or not is irrelevant. But to create them out of the union, however they got out of the union, and allow them to continue without building into the personnel ordinance in a proper way, and creating appropriate job descriptions, as I learned is not the case with the enterprise fund finance administrator. There is no formal job description, which is another clearly inappropriate thing. Those positions or that ordinance is a violation of the city charter. I just thought I'd point that out. Now moving on to the detail. I went through the various salaries in every department. And I ran into a couple of things that confused me. And I know there was collective bargaining agreements for 3% in many cases and various other contracts that were approved. But I'm struggling with a couple, and I'll pose questions, but rather I think I'll just send them out off in an email later so that you can deal with them and address them. But for instance, there are three positions in the library staff, where the increase for them is only 1.5% or in one case, 0%. I don't know if it has to do with being, two people being in a pro-tech union. It hasn't been settled as a contract yet. But they're not the same as the 3% the other people had. And I have no idea why a reader's advisor would be in there at 0%. And again, I'm using the adopted budget numbers last year from the personnel list, following the pages with this year's budget. So I don't know if, I don't know that anything changed in that regard. The admin coordinator in the planning department, research analyst. The amount in last year's budget is actually higher than this year's budget. It's a reduction of 4%. I don't know if that has to do with the change in personnel, but it may. Various positions. The two code enforcement officers in the building department are showing a 16% increase, but I guess that might be something that was settled separately. I don't know. The senior code enforcement officer knows a 0%, while the assistant building inspector is comparably at a minus 4.5% salary. And coupled in, other positions, zoning inspection clerk and code enforcement coordinator, both negative numbers at minus 2%. Same as money. I just don't know what the foundation is to those things and the reality of why it's such. Let me see. We also list, well, various positions that are in that non-union, non-classified are showing 0% increases. And I understand how that may be good for a budget. I'm not sure it's something that's going to survive for the whole year. And then in the treasury department, it's like a random number table. The bookkeeper is at a 0.8% increase. The treasury aide is at the 3%. The AR clerk is at a 1.2%. The account clerk is at a minus 0.7%. The user charge clerk is at a 1.9%. I hope they were all in said union or something. Maybe I'm wrong. Executive secretary for the Public Works Department director is a 2% increase. And also in the engineering department, back in the day of the previous administration, our solid waste superintendent was part of the engineering department because that's where you came from. But I could not, the number went to zero, or the position disappeared in the 26 budget. And I don't know whether the position is somewhere else, but I couldn't find it. Do we have a solid waste superintendent still? I don't know. But right now, I'm showing it as zero because I couldn't find it in any other department. And the construction project manager job exists, and I believe is appropriate based on what's going on. And that's fine. It looks like it's a little bit above what the solid waste superintendent was making, so it could make sense. And then there's an engineering assistant position that's vacant and has no value placed in its salary. And then the solid waste laborer for person, which I don't know if that's a union position or not, but the increase in the salaries in the two-year budgets is a 14.5% increase. And then the solid waste laborer is a 4.5% increase. Maybe that is something that was negotiated and whatever, I would hope it was ratified by the council. And then on to some other areas. In the finance department, I'm concerned with the fact that we're spending 200-plus thousand estimated for this year and 2025 for the audit services. And yet, next year's budget is projected at $86,900. And I know you have to go to bid for the 2025 audit. And I doubt the 24 audit will be finished during the '25 cycle. So some costs will be carried into next year, unless they're shown as payables. But I don't think they're going to finish providing the service in this year. So it will have to carry into next year. And I seriously doubt, once you go to bid for '25 and you're finished paying for '24, you're going to do it with $96,000. $96,900, sorry. And so I believe that's underestimated. And I'm saying this because it was done, whatever was done here, I'm sure it was done to bring it to the 4% cap. And that's fine. But I'm here to talk to you about what I think the reality is based on what I speak. Because both the police and fire division overtime, and we know the overtime and police and fire are always high. And oftentimes, they're paid for either other vacancies or some contingency relocation usually every year. But right now, the police expenditure for overtime is close to, looks like a quarter of a million dollars projected over the budget this year and the same budget for next year at $775. And then overtime and fire today is $1.23 million projected against a $150,000 budget. There is not enough money in your contingency to cover it. I don't know if the salary numbers for the year-end will be able to cover it, but it doesn't look like it based on the projected salaries through the end of the year. So that, to me, is another, I think, appears to be an artificially deflated number in order to keep us at 4%. Not sure it's honest to say that we're going to actually be able to absorb over a million and quarter dollars during the year through vacancies. That's a lot of people. I will send you questions and hope I can get answers on the fact that the maintenance of computer software is reduced from 110,000 to zero. But then the other independent services in the police division has increased from 27,000 to 260,000. I'm sure there's an explanation, and I'll look forward to seeing it. Moving on to the Public Works Department, street lighting. For some reason, street lighting is $285,000 budgeted for '25. And the projected actual number says only $85,000. I have a suspicion that it should have said $285,000, but I don't know. Usually, that's a number that, not having a means to estimate accurately for the end of the year, is simply put in a budget amount. But it's reduced to $175,000. Again, is that reality, or is that to make us come in at 4%? I think that's a fair question to ask. The overtime in the Public Service Division, budgeted $200,000, projected to be spent at about $275,000. That's a $75,000 difference. But again, it's budgeted for $200,000, which means, are we going to have to absorb another $75,000 there? And let me see, moving on to the fact that I guess, and I heard Director DeGastino on radio talking about the fact that we will not be using our operating budget for any significant highway construction or reconstruction or outside vehicle purchases. And I understand that. And I think I presented a possible solution coming up when they deal with the red light and cameras and speed cameras as a source of revenue that would provide support for major cost vehicles, equipment and such for public safety, but could also incorporate the costs. I believe there should be sufficient funds to incorporate the costs for Public Works Department because those spending amounts, when something goes wrong, can really throw a budget into mayhem. I think in the long run, the city is better off if you have stable growth, even if you have to get a tax increase. Having a stable growth and no jerking motions like we've had to go through the last couple of years through no fault of anyone in this room at fault. But it happened, and we have to deal with it. And it's a little disturbing that I see even small amounts of reduction because the senior services aging well is a reduction of $25,000. There's a reduction of $5,000 for veteran expenses and museum contributions to $2,500. And I'm not sure exactly what the need is, unless it's to get us down to 3.9999%. But if there's a way to find a way to put that back, if it's necessary, unless there is a known grant spot to compensate for those losses. I don't know what's coming in the CDVG budget next Monday. I haven't had a chance to look at it. And I talked about the school appropriation. I'm going to finish with the big nut, which is the health insurance. I doubt seriously that the city's health insurance costs, which are actually budgeted for '26 at a mere 0.6% more than the projected actual cost for '25, and only 4% more than the budget for '25. Having been through the process of healthcare valuation estimates, I know that Blue Cross provides analysis based on numbers through December. I would expect the city should have a consultant who can update numbers maybe through February or March in order to give you percentage projections necessary on working rates, which basically translate into your premium costs and your healthcare costs for the year as a percentage increase. I have serious doubts that it's anywhere near 4% or less. And so I consider that to be undervalued. And again, I'm not here to say, "Oh yeah, just raise it, raise it all and raise the levy." I'm just here to say, let's deal in reality. Because we have to adjust to the reality because of the terrible things that happened before. And not to do it now means you're doing it now and you're doing it next year because we'll be short this year coming. And we should fix that and fix it now, one time. Because you're still going to have to contend with the state screwing up education the way they do and other things that will come at you over time, like federal funding cuts and things of that nature. So I would urge you to consider the possibilities and do what's appropriate to fix the mess that's been left behind to be fixed. And not concern yourself with, frankly, I haven't even calculated my new tax bill, but from talking with various people who have, it's not 4% based on like it was last year, where it was 4% increase, 4% tax increase. Because the values have changed in the revaluation and the relationships among the categories and the various units within those categories is changing. And so the impact is not as severe in residential categories. And so if you are going to do something, do it now. Get it over with. Set us on a proper plateau so that we can start moving into the future properly and not still worry about having to play catch-up. Thank you for your time.
You're going to send all of that to us in an email?
Sure.
Please. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Amy Hasta, 35 First Avenue. I'm also a member of the Wunsaket School Committee. I'm here tonight to speak about the school system and what's going on with the budget cuts. Unfortunately, we had to lay off some really great teachers due to this budget cuts. And as you've heard in speeches from everybody here, I can't stress how important some of these teachers are. I had students that were in the school system. And if it wasn't for some of these teachers that dealt with my kids, they wouldn't have been able to get through the school system the way they did because they had behavioral issues. the way they did because they had behavioral issues or they had NIP that they needed help with. And these teachers go above and beyond and do so much more than what they really need to, and now it's going to be even more difficult. And it's definitely, like she said, going to hinder the progress of our students, especially our young youth. These are our kids that are shaping our future here. There should be no question asked when we're needing more help financially to be able to get these kids the future that they deserve. And these teachers are working really, really hard to give these students the future they deserve, but it's hard when they get cuts and they can't give those students the devotion and dedication that they deserve, even though they work really hard to give it to them. And I just want to say, I don't think you guys get enough recognition, so thank you guys, if you guys deserve it. And I just want to say, please, help us, help them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Tammy Carhor, 35 Summer Street, Wensocket resident. I'm also a former employee, 17 years of the school district. And I actually had kind of a convening at professional development today with other Wensocket teachers who are former employees, were former employees, and normally left for the situation that continues to be happening here. I'm currently in a school district where the state, because more money was given to Wensocket, cut that district, and the entire town came out to do a $500,000 increase, which ended up being a small amount. So I urge people, like, I don't understand, Doc, maybe you just was up here, said you just saved $6 million that we didn't come back to the city gas. Since the budget commission, I was here, I taught during the time of the budget commission, came to many of the meetings, and the school districts has continued, and every single year show how responsibly fiscally they have been since then, except we have situations that are going to start happening, that are going to force staff upon us again if taxes are not raised. Nothing is doable for anyone in any city or town in the state or in this country right now, but you can't do it to harm the students. What's going to happen a couple of years when Rye's Prep opens a high school in the North End, a residential area, for 400 students? We're going to end up back where we were during that budget commission. And I remember not being able to almost open school because we didn't have toilet paper. That shouldn't happen because this school committee and this administration has shown they are fiscally responsible. So please, even if it's a small impact to taxpayers, if it's one less dinner out, I think kids deserve one less dinner out. So thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the city council? There are none, I'll look for a motion to close the public hearing. It's made by Councilwoman Sierra, seconded by Councilwoman Dubois, and Harmon. To close the public hearing, are all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and the public hearing is closed at 7:55. I want to thank everyone for being respectful, knowing that everyone here heard much of what you said, and this is what the benefit of this type of hearing is, it gives us the opportunity to see what really goes on with the budget beyond the papers that were given and what we're dealt with that are just black and white. So thank you for coming out. It did not fall on deaf ears, I assure you. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk, new business resolutions.
25 R. 76, the resolution authorizing a solid waste and recycling services agreement with reliable resource recovery cooperation for the period of July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2027.
Motion made by Councilwoman Joyce, seconded by Councilwoman Sierra and Harmon. There are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and 25 R. 76 is approved 5 to 0. Being that there's no further business in this committee, I look for a motion to close the hearing. It's made by Councilwoman Harmon, seconded by Councilwoman Dubois, and there are no in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and there are no in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and there are no in favor?